Good evening, everybody. Can we start with an introduction for interpreter, please?
Yes, good afternoon, everybody. I'm Andrea with the Community Language Cooperative. We're going to practice language justice today. And once we turn on the interpretation, if you're on Zoom, you're going to see a globe where you're going to be able to select your language between English and Spanish. If you are not bilingual, please choose a language from the globe or the three little dots or where it says more. Hola a todos, soy Andrea con la Community Language Cooperative. Vamos a practicar la justicia del lenguaje y vamos a tener interpretación simultánea en inglés y en español. Una vez que aprendamos la interpretación, ustedes van a ver un globo en la parte inferior de su pantalla donde van a poder seleccionar su idioma. Si no ven el globo, seleccionen los tres puntitos donde dice más y encontrarán la función de interpretación. Thank you, and we can start interpretation now.
Thank you, Andrea. I'll call this regular meeting of the Sheridan City Council to order for Monday, June 23, 2025. The time is 7:02 PM. Can we have roll call, please? Right, we have all members except for Councilmember Stang. Councilmember Stang is out ill tonight. Can I get a motion to excuse her? I've got a motion from Councilmember Moreno and a second from Councilmember Whitaker. Let's vote on that. That motion is approved unanimously. Thank you. All right, let's rise for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty God, may your grace cover each aspect of this meeting. We pray that all voices will be heard and that we will have a mindset of inclusivity. May this be a safe space for people to express their opinions and a place where ideas matter more than titles. May everyone be engaged and involved and may all concerns be addressed. May each member of this team feel valued and may we each recognize the skill sets and knowledge that each person brings to the table. Amen.
Let's lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, first we'll receive and file the financial reports. I have a motion from Councilmember Camacho. Second from Councilmember Moreno. Any discussion on the financial reports? Please cast your votes. That motion is approved unanimously. Next, we have staff reports. City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things. On the dais, you should have, if you are attending the CML conference, a credit card authorization form to use at the resort and a tax exemption form as well. So if they have any questions, it all should be on file, but I want to make sure you had a copy so you didn't have any issues. And then you should also have an invitation to the judge's long overdue retirement party. That'll be happening on July 22 here at 1:30 to 3:30. We're kind of just doing it open house. Stop by and celebrate the judge with us. And then lastly, we had our SIRS audit last week. Our unofficial scores at this point, we received 101 out of 100 for workers comp and 105 out of 104 property casualty. So we did really well on our SIRS audit. So official report will be coming. And that is all I have, but happy to answer questions.
How'd you get the extra points?
So they do different things for being innovative. So we just kind of tell them things, the projects we did throughout the year, extra security stuff that we do. So if we do like a security survey through the property and just kind of show different areas of weakness and how we're working on it. So the gate was a big one for us this year, like installing that gate and securing the police cars was good. They also get extra points for the police department being accredited. So those are all things that give us bonus points. So always looking for those extra bonus points and how we can bump up our scores and take down our cost for insurance.
That's good job.
Great. Okay, City Attorney.
Thank you. So our entire firm will be attending the Colorado Municipal League Conference or CML Conference in Breckenridge this week. I love this event personally. As we attend a lot of CLEs, we have two of particular interest this year. One is an immigration law update, which is important given the current atmosphere, and then addressing issues with unhoused populations through the court system. That should be another interesting one. We also receive a legislative update and a case law update throughout the year. So some helpful things are more than just getting an ethics credit. So I do like this conference a lot for my purposes. I've been, in the meantime, our office has been working with community development and Andrew and his Ari and Nathan to finish complying with 2024 legislature legislative mandates. And then office hours from staff have been going pretty well. It's a good opportunity to go through our task lists and keep moving things forward. And I found it really valuable to really get to know the staff here, coming in about once a week. And then finally, Jeff will be attending the council meeting in July. I have a scheduling conflict with another client, but he is very excited to be here and to see you all. So yeah, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, let's go over a few things. While Betsy was touching on CML, we are going to be getting together for dinner on Wednesday and Thursday night. On Thursday night, it will be, where is it? The name of the place?
It's called Bol, B-O-L.
Bol. And Betsy's firm will be hosting us there at that. And then Jenna called around to see on Wednesday night what we might be able to do. And it was a bit of just craziness a little bit. So what we've decided, we kind of went full circle and we're going to go to Mi Casa, which is Mexican food on Wednesday night. And I'll send a text or something and let everybody know what time. What does meet over there? And Jenna talked to him and said, you know, might be 15, 20 minute wait like that and should be able to seat us then. So anybody who wants to, we'll do that. And I'll send a text to everybody. So we should have those two dinners once everybody gets up there. The next one, very good news. So what you'll see here is the summary page that I handed out to you that goes over the sales of the certificates of participation that was held last week. We had, so as you remember, in the discussions with our bond counsel and with our financial advisors, that we were going to do a competitive sale. We did have two bids, which is good. I would have maybe liked, I did more than two. But the good news is that we had the one bid that was accepted was a very good bid. If you might recall, we had been at the tile, you know, a month or so ago, and we were going over things with council. We had modeled out a interest rate of somewhere around anywhere from 4.7% up to 5%, if you remember. What we received was 4.07. So I think that's a very good rate that came in that we also received a premium out of this, which was 132,868. And when Teresa and I talked with the financial advisors on this, we directed them to just roll that monies into the project so we could have some additional funding for the project to avail ourselves of. If we end up not using it, you can put it back in towards payment of the COP. So we thought having that available would be immediately would be the most beneficial at that time. And then you're not losing it, right? So you can always use it for, the other option had been, you know, would be to pay down the debt and do that. But yeah, it's more of a, you know, Teresa said more money is better. So that's what we've done. So we will have that premium available to apply towards project costs. Let's try to see if there was anything else on here. I think that's about it. We just spent about 20 minutes before the meeting signing all the documents for the closing, which is scheduled to take place this Thursday. So closing this Thursday, and then we would anticipate receiving funds sometime the following week. Okay, we will also execute the contract with ESG at that time at your next council meeting. We'll have funds in place. So we'll execute the contract with ESG to proceed with the implementation of the project at that time. So that'll be at the first July meeting. Okay, also, the other handout, I'll stop there. Was there any questions about the COPs, the sale, anything like that?
More about the renovation.
I'm sorry?
More about what will result from this. How disruptive will the whole process be once they start doing the roof?
Don't think it'll be too destructive, but Niffy, if you remember Niffy from EFC, he'll be here at the July meeting and he can go into more detail than I could on that one. So I'll ask them to cover those topics and kind of go into the, some more of the, go into the weeds a little bit more on the implementation and what that will look like. Hopefully, it won't be too onerous on the public or the staff. I know we're not, I don't believe that we'll have to leave the building for any significant length of time or anything along those lines, especially when they elected to end up doing the windows as not full replacements but inserts. That could have been very disruptive, you know, full window replacements could be pretty disruptive. But with the doing it as an insert, my understanding from the gentlemen that do this is that it's not very disruptive at all. So, but I'll ask them to cover that for you at our next meeting. So going to that, you bet. Next item, the other handout that I gave to you looks like this and it says Inglewood, Littleton and Sheridan at the top. I was approached last week by the city manager of Inglewood. They have been working or attempting to work with RTD to get a new bus stop for the ready to work facility. There's not one that's apparently within comfortable walking distance. They've been having discussions with RT, but apparently the discussions have not been fruitful. So they, I should say, Sean called myself and our counterpoint Jim and counterpart Jim in Littleton. And we kind of bandied about the idea of doing a joint resolution for the three cities to maybe bring it to the attention of folks at RTD a little bit more forcefully than just staff can do. So that's what you see in front of you. It's a real, this is a very first draft. And I think it's going to be a couple of drafts going forward with this. So I don't anticipate we having anything for you guys to take formal action on, probably for a month or so at least would be my guess. But I just wanted to get you guys a rough draft. Put your eyes on it. If you have thoughts about it, let me know. If you have some language you'd like to see in there, consider that. And also primarily, I wanted to know if anybody had any concerns. I told my counterparts, I didn't think that my council would, but I wanted to run it off, run it by you guys first. So let me know if you have any concerns about that with anything along those lines and I'll make sure that they get addressed before you get a final draft in front of you. Let's see, I covered the COP, CML, RTD. Last thing I have on my list is that we are scheduled to have the clock replaced a week from today. So hopefully we'll have everything in place. They don't change, they don't change anything up on us, but I know Zach has been working hard on getting things arranged for that so that we should be able to get that installed hopefully next Monday. So that's all I've got now, Mayor. Happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have questions right now?
Oh, one thing I meant to mention, I'm sorry, I forgot to, movies in the park, our first movies in the park on Friday went very well. Had 100-ish people or more at that, which is a great turnout on a hot day. Remember Friday was pretty hot. So had a good turnout, everything went pretty well, you know, good start to the movie season, right? Anything you wanted to add to that, Wendy?
I think people appreciated.
Get up to the mic if you don't mind.
Hey Wendy, do you mind going to the microphone for our people online?
Last year, I think we had, all three were kid movies, which is great for families, but not so much for the adults. So this year, we kicked it off with Maverick and people seemed to be really into the movie and at the end got a big applause. So we're going to have kid movies for the next two, but it was nice to have an adult movie in there too. So I think they appreciated that. It was fun.
Thank you, Wendy.
Okay, Chief.
Just a quick update or a reminder, the Sheridan Police Department and Night Owl Car Show will be July 12. So we'll have one more meeting, but just wanted to put that on your agenda for the 12th and it will be from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And this year's recipient of the funds that we'll raise is Sheridan Rising Together. So that should be great. That'll be our fifth year doing that here in Sheridan. So I don't have anything else, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, just quiet, huh?
Not quiet. Been a lot of issues.
Just always busy.
Yes.
All right, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Anybody have any other questions for staff before we move on? Okay, then we will go on to the minutes, minutes of the regular city council meeting of June 9, 2025. I have a motion from Councilmember Kelly and a second from Councilmember Camacho. Any discussion on the minutes? Please cast your votes. That motion is approved unanimously. Next, we have the consent agenda, approval of dispersments, authorized dispersments that have been or will be made from June 1, 2025 to June 15, 2025 in the amount of $478,944.84 per the referenced and attached transfer of funds. A motion from Councilmember Whitaker and a second from Councilmember Moreno. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Please cast your votes. That motion is approved unanimously. We have items for individual consideration ordinances on second reading. And we'll invite comments from the public prior to considering these ordinances. We have ordinance 11 of 2025 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sheridan, Colorado, amending Chapter 56, Article 31 by updating utility requirements and providing supplemental standards for accessory dwelling units to comply with HB 241152. I have a motion from Councilmember Whitaker and a second from Councilmember Moreno. We have any discussion amongst council? Do we have anyone from the public who'd like to speak on ordinance 11? I don't see anyone, so we will vote. Motion is approved unanimously. Next, we have ordinance 12 of 2025 and ordinance of the City Council of Sheridan, Colorado, amending Section 56-461 of the Sheridan Municipal Code regarding off-street parking requirements to comply with HB 241304. I have a motion from Councilmember Moreno and a second from Councilmember Whitaker. Any discussion from council on this ordinance? Look good to everybody. Okay, anyone from the public who'd like to speak on ordinance 12? Don't see anyone, so we'll vote on it. That motion is approved unanimously. Next, we have mayor's choice and I don't have anything tonight. About council members, do you have anything? Nope. Okay, we have time for public comment, which will not exceed the total of 20 minutes, two minutes per speaker. Is there anyone who would like to speak to council tonight? Looks like we have Mr. Labato signed up. Come on up. Please speak. Yeah, please state your name and address for the record. Pull the microphone down to you too.
Mr. John M. Labato, 3335 South Bryan Street. I've lived in the city of Sheridan since I was nine years of age. Sheridan High School graduate, Rappel Community College graduate, University of Colorado graduate, Department of Energy retiring in the nuclear field, was one of the best United States in the world, had acute clearance, United States still worker retiring. So that's my background, a single guy and given to charities over 40 years. I thought I could make a dent in poverty. No way. I hope that I'm gonna, I wrote this list before I came in. I hope everyone is in good health and you all have a wonderful Fourth of July, all of you with your families.
Thank you, you too.
Because this life is short. I don't have a lot of my immediate family with me. They're with the Lord. And my father was a World War II veteran. My mother, Catholic Christian lady, they lived through the Great Depression. They worked for 35 cents a day. And a lot of people did. And my mother, my father came back sick from the war. He wanted to kill my mother and my sister with a knife. They had to throw it on top of the house. So he wouldn't do it, but they're with the Lord now. I'm going to sound like a broken record. We need more police officers. Examples, I live in District 1, so this is to the consul in there, and the other lady that's not here. Speeding on my street in Bryant, going through stop signs at high rates of speed Floyd and Bryant all the time. I was working in my backyard about a month ago, my sister and I cutting trees. I'm still doing a little yard work back there. I noticed a car back there in the alley. I heard noises. So I said, I thought it was kids. I went back to police officers back there and I know them. I said, what's going on, guys? They said, this car was used last night in a carjacking. That's another example. Countless times on Bryant Street, because they put in a halfway house up there without people knowing. I see people coming and going all the time, all hours of the night. And I've met some of the guys. They're good guys. They want to start their lives in another way than it was before. And three doors down from me, and Consulman Camacho asked me this, not too long ago, it was about two weeks, all the police officers and detectives, they, all of them that I could count, they were doing an investigation there. I don't know what it was about. But they can verify it for me. They've had problems with that house for many, many years. And what people do in their houses, that's their business. That's their little kingdom, their little castle. That's why I see it, you know? And also illegal fireworks on Kenosha Court. I've had to call so many times about this because behind my home, there were fires two years ago, burned completely to the ground. And they need to put one of those big signs up there on Kenosha Court on the northeast side. So they don't start somebody's house on fire when they're sleeping. And there's, and I noticed coming here on South Bryan and Old Hampton, they need to go cut the weeds there. People need to cut weeds and over there on Floyd and Bryant Street, you go east a block, somebody moved out of there, left a mattress. I don't think people living there wants an old mattress there. They want to live in a good community. That's why I come up here.
Thank you, Mr. Labato. I appreciate you coming out.
You're welcome. And I don't want to spend 20 minutes because I only give you two minutes, but there you are. For all of you to know what's going on in my city. And if you want to, you can walk all the blocks and find out what's going on. You're our elected officials. Ask all the neighbors wherever you are representing. Go ask them. That's all I have to say. Thank God bless you all.
You too. All right, does anybody else who'd like to speak to council tonight? Okay, then we will adjourn this meeting and we're going to move into our Sheridan Redevelopment Agency meeting. Time is 7:25 PM. So I will call to order this meeting of the Sheridan Redevelopment Agency for Monday, June 23, 2025. Time is 7:26 PM. Can we have roll call, please? They kicked us out and we're going back in now. Try again.
Sorry, I had to switch meetings.
Yeah. Okay, we have all members present. So we'll go on to the approval of the minutes. Minutes of the SRA regular meeting of April 28, 2025. I have a motion from Board Member Kelly and a second from Board Member Moreno. Any discussion on the minutes? Please cast your votes. That motion is approved unanimously. Next, we have the financial reports. Receive and file the financial reports. I have a motion from Board Member Camacho and a second from Board Member Moreno. Any discussion on the financial reports? Please cast your votes. The motion is approved unanimously. Then we have the approval of dispersments, authorized dispersments for May in the amount of $169,381,027 that have been or will be made for expenses referenced below, legal expenses none, other professional services, $9,734.96, city support services, $158,906, other expenses, $740.31, and authorized dispersments for June in the amount of $183,308.4 that have been or will be made for expenses referenced below, legal expenses none, other professional services, $23,625.43, city support services, $158,906, and other expenses, $776.61. I have a motion from Councilmember Whitaker and a second from Councilmember Camacho. Any discussion on the dispersments? Please cast your votes. That motion is approved unanimously. We have no resolutions. New business? We not have Teresa? We don't get a pinnacle report tonight?
Oh, you always get a pinnacle report.
Okay.
So, so tonight, I wanted to talk a little bit about the pledge revenues. If you'll go down to the next page that actually shows the chart in March of last year, which actually was April, we did have a large audit payment. So you'll see that in March of this year, it looks kind of a negative number and looks a little bad, but if you look at our year to date, we are still 0.26% higher. And I know that doesn't sound really high, but you have to understand it was a pretty large payment. So we're still higher than even with the audit payment. So that's pretty impressive that we're pretty steady on that. I think the big thing that we're working on right now is the audit that, as I said, the auditor is running behind. We just got our first draft and is a little rough. We're, we're still missing some things. So we're kind of working through that. And so we will have that all ready though for your July 28th board meeting. So happy to answer any questions that you might have.
My only question was what happened. So glad, glad to hear the explanation.
Very good.
Anybody else have questions for Teresa? Okay. Then we'll be adjourned. Time is 7:30 PM. Thank you, everybody for coming.